Good morning again, everyone. It's eight fifty-four P M. We're gonna start at approximately nine oh two. Give individuals an opportunity to join in. Thank you again for taking your Saturday to be with us. Good morning, everyone. On a sunny Saturday morning. Mr. Jimmy, can you have the backups ready for me, please? As well as the code of conduct. Presentation. Just in case there's an issue. It's eight fifty-nine A M. Ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna. The latest to about nine oh two A M. Give the stragglers an opportunity. To live on. We're up to thirty-nine participants. Thank you for taking your Saturday morning to join us. Fifty-four participants. Okay, we're gonna get started. Good morning, everyone. And welcome to this Saturday. August fifteenth, twenty twenty. I'm Dr. Cook Proud Superintendent of Catskill Central School District. Reporting to you live from three forty-three. West Main Street, Catskill, New York. One-two-four-one-four. This morning, uh, we're gonna provide a reopening presentation for you. We're required by executive order from the governor to have three. We actually had one scheduled for Thursday, but there was a delay. And so what? There was some Zoom. Circuit type of issue, so we apologize for that again. So thank you for taking your Saturday morning to be with us. School districts across the state. Seven hundred fifty or so. Are required to have a reopening plan. To. Present to parents in the community. Reentering students and staff in a safe manner. As I mentioned in previous presentations. The safety and security of our students and staff are priority. You know, two years ago, we brought in our retired. Armed officers. To make sure that our students and staff remain safe to keep the bad guys out. Last year, we implemented the Raptor visitor management system. Where any visitors who come in have to scan a government issued I D. It's pretty much. It prints out a badge. It goes through a legal system to notify if there's any type of custody issues. Restraints, etc. So. You know, we really take safety and security very seriously. More so, um, speaking of that. You know, my recommendation is to bring back. Students in a phased-in model. A progressive type of model. Because right now, there's a lot of uncertainty. If you look at the news, you will see that many. School districts in our southern states are opening, closing and reopening again. So that adds further frustration. To you as a parent. And community members. Most recently in Albany. A daycare center at Albany Medical. Had a shutdown because, you know, there were some staff and students. Under their care. Who tested positive for COVID. So if you have a medical center. Having difficulty getting this right. Who's to say that a school district? It's not gonna have any difficulty, so. I'm gonna present to you again an overview of my presentation. I'm not necessarily gonna go slide by slide because I'm gonna give our administrators. An opportunity to present their building specific plans. Here in district, and I think that's very important. You know, my presentations are already recorded. It's on a district website for you to take a look at. In addition to that, we have a new normal video. So thank you to Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Lovero, Mr. Mioras. And our department leaders and administrators for. Assisting with that because that gives parents. A visual perspective of what the new normal will look like. You know, I'm a visual learner. You can write anything you want on paper, but until I see it in action. You know, it's really not gonna resonate to me. So we have all different types of learners. As adults, as children, so the visual aspect. Really helps out a lot and also helps to create questions. That may be asked, and we do have a list of questions. So at the end of all presentations, if you have any questions. I'm gonna ask you that you enter those in the chat box. We're not gonna be having live conversations. Due to some technical difficulties that happened. On July twenty-ninth. You know, this is a parent forum. If you have any perspectives. As far as Black Lives Matters, any type of community related stuff. You wanna discuss with me. I have open door policy. You can come see me anytime you like. To have that type of conversation, but this is for our parents. To. Get a better understanding of what the new normal will look like. So again, thank you. Thank you for joining us. District's reopening plan. Again, overview of this plan is very simple. We collaborated with other Department of Health. The C D C, State Education Department. Governor's Office to put a plan together. Again, that helps students, staff, parents get an idea of what the new normal will look like. And the reentering of our students into the school district. And speaking of plans, I know there was some discrepancies listed in the local newspaper. Our plan was submitted to S E D. We did verify the Department of Health received not only our plan. But an affirmation and receipt that they received it. So we should not be on a list. You know, and that's embarrassing for me. You know, as a leader to see your name, your school district on a list. So I apologize for that, but uh, you know. Sometimes when you deal with government officials and different things. Sometimes the T's aren't crossed and the I's aren't dotted, so. We did submit our stuff. On time, and I do have receipts. To verify that. Guiding principles. Again, most of the guiding principles are compliance related issues we learned from the March through June. You know, school closure that students needed technology, students needed hot Wi-Fi access. Students needed materials. You have to remember during that time, the governor was closing schools in two week increments. And the school didn't really close until May first, but they extended of the school year. So, you know, having two week increments and disruption. It was hard to gain consistency until we had a fine, clear line of where the governor was headed, so. You know, we know there were some gaps. We do thank you for all of the great comments we received, the hard work, but we know there are gaps. We know there were gaps in several different aspects. So this school year, we're gonna try to close those gaps. We're gonna start the school year off with instruction on Monday, September fourteenth. We're gonna have four full days of professional development. For our staff to make sure that everyone's on the same page. Everyone understands the expectations. The procedures, etc. So our school staff, part of phase one, all of them will be back on campus. Providing remote instruction from their classroom. So that's the expectation. You know, a lot of them, both all of them were presenting information from their homes. We need staff back here on campus. For accountability issues and also for availability issues. You may have a parent who wants to come in and schedule an appointment to meet with teachers. It's difficult to do that online, and I know many of our teachers were working up to ten, eleven o'clock in the evening. Working with parents and working with students, but we wanna make sure that our staff is here. And providing instruction, answering those key questions that may become available from staff and students. Again, clear communication is very important moving forward. No gaps. Chronological timeline of events. Just go through a couple of these. So again, March first, twenty twenty, the governor announced the first confirmed case of COVID in New York and directs the Department of Health. To declare a public health emergency. It was an issue in New Rochelle, New York, Westchester County. That became a hotbed for COVID. And those issues transpired and spread throughout the state. On March sixteenth, the governor signs executive order, close all schools, March eighteen, twenty twenty. We actually closed on March seventeen, twenty twenty, and our meal program began the next day on the eighteenth. Distributed Chromebooks are hotspots April first. We found there were a select few of students who did not have Chromebooks. Not only that, they did not have Wi-Fi hotspot access. So again, we wanna thank Mr. Shaw. He really took the bull by the horns and he was able to secure a grant. Through our county legislators. So thank you to Mr. Lovero, who also serves as a teacher in the district. But he's a county legislator as well as the Catskill Educational Foundation. Who helped support that grant. So with that grant, we provide a hotspot access. Although the grant has dried up, the money has dried up. As a school district, we're gonna continue with making sure that we subscribe to our local cable companies. For, again, for students who need that hotspot access. So we're gonna continue that momentum. And again, we thank Mr. Shaw and all of our government officials for assisting us with that. April second, the governor started to close schools in two week increments. He also canceled spring break. We had to provide instruction. Spring break, so our students lost spring break. But school ending early in June. That school break was compensated by early closure of the school year. April fifteenth, the Board of Regents canceled all regions exams and raised three through eight assessments. Including the grades four through eight science assessment as well. May first, this is when the governor made his big announcement. He decided to close schools for the remainder of the school year. June eleventh, we began to be proactive. We put together a school committee. A reopening committee, and the committee consists of our safe committee. Our results teams on both campuses. Our results team is comprised of department leaders, teachers, administrators. We have representatives in each and every school. So those individuals came together to assist us with our reopening plan. And will provide us with recommendations or suggestions. So we thank them again in advance. Last day of instruction for students was on June sixteen, twenty twenty, and we had our second reopening meeting on June twenty-fifth. On July eighth, the governor sets deadlines for state as the first week of August for school reopening guidance. June, July tenth, we sent out a survey to staff and families. Provide feedback for us to help us with our reopening plan. And I'll go over some of that data that we received from our parents and staff momentarily. We had our reopening of schools committee, the third one on July twenty-third. We had our fourth on July twenty-fifth. Excuse me, twenty-fourth, and we had our parent meeting on July thirtieth. So the governor mentioned that parents and staff need to be involved. We were ahead of the curve with that. But making sure that people had feedback, people had access to our plan, so. You know, before the governor said that staff and parents need to be involved, we were way ahead of that because we believe that our stakeholders have a voice. And we take that voice very seriously. Presentation occurred in July twenty-ninth. This is when I made my recommendation to the Board of Education to start in a phased-in reentry. There are three phases in my plan. Many of the surrounding school districts and school districts across the state, as you can tell now, are also phasing in. Their students back on campus. I just think it's the common sense thing to do. You know, we wanna learn from others' mistakes, unfortunate mistakes, but we do not wanna put our students or staff at risk. We wanna do things in a common sense type of manner, so, you know. We were one of the first in the area to mention a phased-in reopening process, so, you know, students will be back. Depending upon what happens with the C D C and infection rates. We're anticipating students being back on Tuesday, October thirteenth. We submitted our school reopening plan on July thirty-first. The governor made his decision on Friday, August seventh regarding the reopening of schools. He allowed school districts to reopen. Providing us with flexibility for the reopening, so we thank him in advance. And again, August through September, and through the whole entire school year, we're gonna continue to prepare, adjust. And this is a working document on that reopening plan. If you look at our website. You will see information related to contact tracing, testing, the virtual learning plan. We have a new normal video. We suggest that you take a look at that video several different times with your. Your spouse. With your children to make sure that you have a better understanding of what the new normal will look like. If you decide to choose a hybrid model. So speaking of that, a letter and survey went home this week. You should have received that. If not, yesterday, you should receive it today. Again, we asked that you look at the video in its entirety before making a decision. We need that information back. By Friday, August twenty-first. And I know there were some questions regarding, you know, can we wait up until the last minute? I think, as, you know, we need that information in advance to prepare for scheduling, to prepare for teaching assignments. There are gonna have to be some reshuffling of students on the elementary level. And I will talk about that toward the end of the presentation, but we need that information as soon as possible. If you do have a change of heart before students come back in, obviously, we can set up individual meetings. But we need information in advance to make, to make sure that things are organized moving forward. So thank you. Again, State Department of Education provided us with a hundred forty-five page document. That was compliance related issues also indicated that were guidelines with reopening schools. So we use that information from their guides to create our reopening plan. Stakeholder feedback. Nine hundred and twenty-nine parents responded to our survey. Two hundred and sixty-three staff members responded as well. The governor wanted us to create. Three different types of plans, one hundred percent in-person instruction. The hybrid model, which is two days of instruction separated by groups, a group A and group B. A group A will be here Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday would be synchronous or asynchronous instruction for students. And Thursday and Friday would be group B. Now, Wednesdays and Saturdays. We're in the process of hiring a cleaning agency to come in. On Wednesday afternoons or the evening and also Saturdays all day to do a thorough, deep down cleaning. You know, our custodians do a great job. As you looked at previous presentations. When we did our car parade. And prior to that, they're doing an outstanding job. But with this pandemic, we wanna double down, just like we do with safety and security. With our own retired officers and also the Raptor management system. We wanna double down when it comes to cleaning here in the district. So on Wednesdays, Tuesdays, group A is leaving for our students. Wednesday, we have a cleaning crew coming in doing a deep cleaning before our group B comes in on Thursday. And when group B leaves on Friday, that thorough cleaning will happen again on Saturday in preparation for group A to come back into the district. So again, if you look at the video, you'll see how we separate desks. We're putting plastic, plastic covering on top of group B desk. So that those desks remain clean and also there's social distancing between students who are coming in on grade, grade, on group A. So that's very important. And again, C, the one hundred percent virtual instruction model, that's online. That's what we're starting with. September fourteenth through October ninth. We have two slides on staff survey information. Again, the preference from staff of teaching and learning model for the fall. The majority of our staff wanted in-person instruction, one hundred percent. Unfortunately, we cannot do that. We do not have enough space to bring back our students, one hundred percent. So we will be out of compliance with C D C regulations. In addition, if we had to bring our students back and comply with social distancing, we would have to hire more staff. So we'd be out of budget, the approved budget would be way out of bounds with bringing back or hiring more staff. If we needed to do one hundred percent in-person instruction with C D C regulations. So that's very important to note. The second survey results from staff, based on current C D C recommendations, check all you think should be mandatory. Again, the daily temperatures, adhering to social distancing and wearing masks. You can see the breakdown of percentages with regards to that. You know, the majority of our staff take this, take this seriously. We had a code of conduct and district-wide safety plan meeting on Wednesday. There's language. Within those recommendations mandating that people wear masks, particularly in common areas and hallways. And lounges, in main offices. You know, when a teacher or his or her assistant or aide is in the classroom, they can socially distance because the room is that large. So they will have to use their professional judgment with that, but for the most part, our students and staff will be required to wear masks. Students will be required to wear masks on the bus. In our buildings, it will be mask breaks in the classroom. Again, it's up to the teacher's discretion to provide those mask breaks. When students have their lunch, obviously, they will be socially distanced. But, you know, they cannot eat their lunch with the mask on, so again, if you look at the video, it shows you how we're gonna separate our students. We're gonna provide plexiglass. If you look at the presentation from Mr. Bragg in the cafeteria. You know, students are sitting on office side of one another, but you didn't see the plexiglass that we're gonna install on those tables. To provide separation between students, so that, those items are being ordered as well. Parent survey information. Again, the majority of our parents want one hundred percent in-person instruction. Unfortunately, we cannot do that at this particular time. If school reopens either one hundred percent in-person or hybrid model, would you send your child to school? Thirty-five percent said yes, thirty-two percent unsure, and thirty-three percent said no. So again, the majority of our parents are either saying no or they're unsure, so again, hopefully, these virtual town hall meetings. And hopefully. You know, the new normal video will assist with that. With changing those percentages. If school opens on a hybrid model. To enforce social distancing, what is your preference, alternate days, alternate weeks? Again, the majority of our parents want alternate days, meaning that their child will be in school. The same week, either on a group A model or group B model. Alternate weeks, meaning that students will be in school one week, then the opposite week, another group of students will be in. You get the majority of our parents do not want that model. Would you be concerned with having a school staff member take your child's temperature each morning upon entry? Eighty-eight percent of our parents said no. Again, looking at the video, our students who take transportation. Their temperatures will be checked before they get on the bus. We're asking our parents to be at the bus stop with their child, also to take their temperature before reporting to the bus stop. If your child's temperature is above one hundred degrees, your child will not be allowed to get on that bus. And your child will have to go back home. Can I expose that temperature to other children on the bus or kids in the, in the school building? If your student, you know, if your child is a walker or dropped off, your child's dropped off, we're gonna have staff taking temperature before your child exits the vehicle. If your child is a walker, before your child enters the building, his or her temperature will be checked. So again, we're taking this very, very seriously. With adhering to guidelines and regulations. So there's no flexibility when it comes to masks. There's no flexibility when it comes to temperature checks. Does your child have a cloth or some type of face mask? Again, the majority of our parents, ninety-three percent said yes. Would you have concerns about your child being required to wear a mask in school? Forty-eight percent said yes, fifty-two percent said no. Again, those forty-eight percent of parents need to really understand that their child needs to wear a mask. Until these regulations are lifted, until there's some type of, you know, cure for COVID nineteen. Your child has to wear a mask. There's no flexibility with that unless there's a mask break within that particular classroom. So if you're uncomfortable with your child wearing a mask in school, maybe you should select the remote, one hundred percent virtual model for the remainder of the school year. Are you, your child, or any member in your household in a higher risk category for COVID nineteen? Fifty-four percent said yes, forty-six percent said no. Again, if you have an immune compromised position, if your child has one, your child will need some type of medical documentation to provide to our nurse's office. In addition to that, you know, you may have elderly parents at home. You know, we would hate for your child to come to school, to become infected, then infect your elderly parents. I mean, God forbid, we don't want anything happening to our students, our parents, or any of their, you know, older parents, so grandparents. So we don't want that happening here. So again, we're taking this very, very seriously. It will be difficult for me to sleep at night. I'm having difficulty right now sleeping at night with this going on. But if someone got sick and someone passed away due to a school mishap. It'll be very, very difficult for me to sleep at night. So again, we take this very seriously. Recommended, recommended models of instruction. Again, going through this, the hybrid model, this is a visual. Again, full day of instruction for group A on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday is synchronous or asynchronous learning remotely. And Thursday will be group B in person. Now, what is synchronous and asynchronous? Synchronous is live instruction, just like we're doing this live virtual town hall meeting. So the teacher will be reporting live in his or her classroom, providing instruction. Asynchronous learning is when the children work independently. So the teacher provides some type of assignment. You know, online, the child's responsibility is to complete that assignment and return it to the teacher. So that's the difference between synchronous and asynchronous. There are some advantages and disadvantages between the hybrid model. Many of the advantages are face-to-face interaction. Be able to group students and schedule them together. Grouping students, when it comes to the hybrid model, we're gonna do our best as a priority to make sure our families, siblings attend school on the same days. So if you have multiple children in multiple school buildings. We wanna make sure that your children are in the same group, whether they're all in group A or all in group B. So I want you to know that in advance. Better able to track students in the hybrid model, increase levels of communication, pairing teachers to provide support to students. Some of the disadvantages, lack of engagement. We learned from March to June. That our students weren't engaged. Many of our students thrive off of social interaction, whether it's a competitive type of situation. I know I'm a competitive person, so I like to be in front of the teacher or in front of the athletic coach. Making sure that I'm the very best, and many of our students thrive on that, so we know. You know, with the hybrid model, with the remote model. That type of competitiveness and social interaction rarely occurs to the level where it needs to be if students were here one hundred percent in person. The virtual instruction model, again, is on our website, and you see a copy of this here on the screen. Every day, the students receive virtual instruction. So that's something that we're gonna start the school year off with. We're distributing Chromebook, Chromebooks from, excuse me, from September eighth through eleventh. We're gonna have a tent set up in the back of our high school near the gymnasium entrance. Distributing Chromebooks at hotspots at that particular point. We wanna make sure by Monday, September fourteenth, all of our students have access to technology, access to hotspots. So everyone starts on the same page. So that's very, very important. Some of the advantages and disadvantages when it comes to virtual instruction. Again, advantages to consistency, students experience will not be interrupted should there be a school closure due to COVID. You know, we're really unsure what's gonna happen. You know, we're putting all these plans together, but the governor comes back and indicates. That, you know, the affection rate is above nine percent. We're gonna be forced to close down, so, you know, no matter what type of plans we put in place, whether it's hybrid, whether it's one hundred percent instruction. There may become a time that we have to close down, so it's very important that you know that. Eliminates classroom exposures, another advantage. Building digital capacity. Many of our students have high capacity when it comes to technology, whether it's through computer use, their cell phone, or any type of video gaming system. Some of the disadvantages with our new students pre-K and kindergarten. You know, and new students and staff to the district. It's a disadvantage having the virtual instruction. We know that, so when we start phasing students back into the school district. We're gonna start with our pre-K and K. And our special education students and our E L L students. So pre-K and K at the elementary school will be back in. First, grade six at the middle school and grade nine at the high school. In addition to that, all of our students who have I E P five oh four or second English, English second language learners. Those students will be back in school. Those students who have I E P five oh four English language learners, those students will be here four out of five days of the week. So that's very, very important when it comes to the hybrid model, that our parents know. That if you have a student classified, or if you have a student who is an English language learner. Those students will be here four out of five days of the week to make sure that they get all their mandated compliance related type of support. So that's very important to note. Professional development, again, September eighth through eleven, we're providing professional development to our staff. How we prepare with P P E. Mask. Again, we have sixteen thousand six hundred masks in stock. We ordered another fifty-two thousand four hundred. Sixteen thousand pairs of gloves. One hundred and fifty gallons of hand sanitizer. Six Genyon machines. Mr. Witt did a great job in showcasing our Genyon machines as well as, you know, the bus supervisor for per student. You'll see them spray the sanitizing mist to keep things clean. As students transition in and out of classroom for the day and also on our buses, those items will be used. We use Merv eight filters, those filters. Top of our classrooms and rooftops, those are changed every three months, and we have one thousand boxes of tissues. We also have our temperature scans. I believe we have fifty of those in stock. Those have been given to each building. We also have. We also have, we also ordered hand sanitizing machines as well as temperature scans for our staff. So our staff, their temperature has to be taken each and every morning before they come in. They will also have to complete a questionnaire every morning before they come in. You know, questionnaire is pretty much identifying, or at least they have to identify whether they've been exposed to COVID or whether their temperature is over a certain threshold. So that's very important. Our staff will have to complete a questionnaire, and their temperature has to be taken as well before they enter into our buildings. My recommendations. Again, our district calendar was modified. We moved our September fourth, excuse me, third professional development date to the eighth, and we also added three professional development days, as I mentioned before, September ninth, tenth, and eleventh. Students will start school on September fourteenth virtually. And our board approved us to purchase additional PPE. Phase one. Again, we need our staff back here on campus, all of our staff. Our ten-month staff will be back here on September eighth. Again, our students will start remotely on September fourteenth. Chromebook distribution, eighth through eleven. The reentry new normal video is on our website now for parents to make a decision. And we also provided parents with the option of hybrid or remote. So that survey is very important for you to complete. We asked that you send it back, but again, as we get closer to October thirteenth, if you ever change your heart, it's important that you call your building principal, set up individual meetings to make a decision. But, you know, we really need that survey information back by next Friday. You can drop off the survey here in my office in the back of my building here, three forty-three West Main Street, or you can mail it in. So it's very important that we have that survey information. Phase two, October thirteenth, twenty twenty through January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. Once you make your selection, your choice will be locked in for the remainder of the first semester. We can't have students go from remote to hybrid, from hybrid back to remote. It's gonna create a lot of problems when it comes to transportation and scheduling. So once you make your decisions, the parent, it's very important that you understand that we have to adhere to that until the beginning of the second semester, which is February first, twenty twenty-one. At that particular time, we want all of our students back here on campus. And we wanna make sure that any parents who want their child to remain on remote instruction, that they still have that option to move forward in that manner. So that's my presentation. I'm gonna shift to our building principals. We're gonna start off with our elementary school with Mr. Rivers. Submit, we have three people waiting. Let's make sure we admit those people. Mr. Rivers. May I ask you to unmute yourself?
Good morning, everybody. How's everyone doing today? So Dr. Cook thoroughly went through the plan as far as our reentry. Starting September fourteenth, I just wanted to kind of dive a little bit deeper into the elementary plan as far as the remote learning is concerned, and then shift over to the hybrid starting in October. Like Dr. Cook said, we are gonna start off with remote learning. During that model, all students are gonna receive meaningful opportunities, remote opportunities, Monday through Friday. The idea is that for math and ELA, we will have, students will be meeting with their teachers every single day, Monday through Friday, five days a week. Social studies and science will be every other day or two to three times per week. We will have opportunities for a teacher or for family to communicate and talk with our teachers during office hours. And it's very important that we have all of our students participate in our online or virtual learning. I think in the fall or in the springtime, we had probably about fifty percent, not a lot of people logging in consistently. I think now that we have a definite plan and a course of action, we need definitely have to have those students logging in, coming up with the schedule, some consistency throughout throughout that, this online period. Like Dr. Cook said, if you need a Chromebook or internet access, we are providing that for every student. I think in the springtime, we had one Chromebook per family. We are, Dr. Cook has viciously allowed us to have one Chromebook per student. So you can have multiple students in a home online at the same time with with those devices. So make sure that if you need one, contact our office so we can get get one for you. Related services or, excuse me, special areas, they're gonna run similar to what we did in the springtime. Our special area teachers will create a lesson per week, put it on their on their Google Classroom, and the students have that week to complete that task or complete that activity, similar to what we do in the school year as well. Related services, as far as IEPs and OT and PT, we're still working on a plan for that, but we are gonna either provide that virtually or to be able to come into the classroom or into the school to get your OT or PT services or speed. So we'll we'll try to flush that as much as we can moving forward. Attendance is gonna be very vital during this virtual plan, because when we shift over to the hybrid plan and trying to create our our A day and B day students, we wanna make sure we have as much data as possible to try to keep similar and like skills together. So when we are in the hybrid model, teachers can really focus on skill deficiencies and really focus on that, on those small groups of students and really take advantage of that that time. So trying to be on virtually every day is gonna be very important. Shifting over to the hybrid model, Dr. Cook did a very good job explaining the hybrid model. We are gonna have group A and group B, Monday and Tuesday for group A. There'll be in-person instruction. Again, we definitely want that detailed skills, so we can, the teachers can really devote a lot of time with that. Thursday, Friday will be group B in person, and while the other opposite end, they'll be doing remote instruction. Wednesdays will be used for either staff development or staff meetings, but also create different synchronous and asynchronous activities for the students, do some, definitely do some smaller groups instruction going on there. The special areas are gonna be important. In the past, we would have a grade level go to a special during a certain period. This year, we're going to try to shift it to where art will be maybe in grade one for one day, because you do have that that half here and half out. So we're trying to shift our schedule so that we have all of our students receive their special area instruction. Again, Dr. Cook mentioned that once we go from the virtual to the hybrid, you have an opportunity to see what is the best fit for you. You have to make that choice, and obviously, we're going to keep that choice until the end of January if you wanna stay remote. All right. I know people have a lot of concerns about safety and professional, or safety and maintaining social distance and following the CDC guidelines. The the video that we created really outlines how we're going to do that, starting off at the bus stop. Aid from the bus will take the temperature of the students. If they pass, they will be allowed on the bus. If not, they will have to return back home. We separated out where students go into the into the building, off the bus, one bus at a time. Students in grades four and five will go in by the preschool playground and the end of the green wing. Grades K through four or K through three will go in the main, main entrance, one at a time, again, maintaining social distancing. And then parent drop off or student drop off, we will have some faculty out there or some staff out there taking temperatures inside of the vehicle. If they pass, they will be allowed to exit the vehicle and into the building. If not, they would have to return back home with with the families. Anytime that they are in the building and in the hallways, we are going to maintain social distancing as best as possible, and also the students are required to wear their masks in the inside or in the hallway. And anytime that we cannot social distance, the mask should be worn. I suggest that families purchase one or two cloth masks and rotate through them and keep them with students. We will have those disposal ones handy on onsite in case someone forgets it or loses it. But we suggest that you definitely keep those masks on anytime that you're in the hallway, common areas, moving from classroom to classroom. In the building, the classrooms will be set up where they are, their students are six feet apart. While they're at their desk, teachers will and students will be wearing masks as much as possible, but if they have to take a a break, a mask break, it is definitely an area where they can do that, as long as they maintain their their six feet apart from from each other. Teachers can come up to a student during that time as well, as long as they have their masks on, and students have their masks on and and check work. But obviously, we don't, we wanna try to avoid any long-term or long-time, ten or fifteen minutes with them and then back them up. We are gonna be dividing, purchasing flexi-glass dividers so that we do, can do some small group instructions. But during that time, obviously, the mask must be maintained and and state and kept on. Hallways, we we make sure the hallways are directional. We are gonna travel on the right side of the hallway, depending on which way, which direction you are going. We will have masks or tape and stopping areas where delineated on the floor or on the ground. So students know how far they need they need to be and remain away from there. And obviously, the classrooms, we're gonna try to maintain our thirty-six foot square bubble. Lunch and recess, we had an opportunity to go through our cafeteria, and we can maintain a six-foot area while we're eating lunch. While one grade level is eating lunch, the other grade level will be out on recess, but we can keep the six-foot distance away from each other. We're still flushing out the exact protocol for that. Either the students will be going through the line, or we'll have lunches available for them at their tables as they get there. So again, like Dr. Cook said, you can have your mask off, because obviously, you cannot eat without with your masks on. But again, we'll have, make sure that those are areas are six foot, six feet apart and maintaining social distancing. Recession, we're gonna alternate the the pre, the primary playground and the elementary playground. So while one student or one grade level is eating, one grade level will be on the on the playground. And also, what we're gonna be doing there is creating different stations. So one day, you might be at a kickball station, the next day, you might be on the playground, next day, you might be on the basketball. So we are still maintaining those pods. We're not intermingling different teachers. And then each each day, it'll rotate. And then obviously, it gives us time. If we're alternating primary and elementary, gives us gives us time to disinfect the playgrounds if needed. Restrooms and water fountains, obviously, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a monitor at each bathroom, making sure that there's only one student in the bathrooms at all times. One one student exits the bathroom, another one can enter back in. And also, at the water fountains, we have spots available or spots on the ground so they can maintain their six-foot distancing. We're gonna shut down all of the traditional water fountains, and we do have bottle fillers located throughout the building. I think we're gonna actually install another one in the gymnasium, so we will have more water filling stations for everybody. I suggest for parents that you purchase a water bottle or something similar to that. Students can can open up the or fill the water bottles at the water filling stations. Make sure you put your name on them, because those are hot commodities. Definitely gonna have posters and all kinds of visible reminders of washing hands, safety, maintaining social distancing throughout the building. We'll have enough staff around to encourage that as well. Then we got dismissal procedure. During our dismissal time, typically, in the past, we would just dismiss the whole grade level at a time. This year, however, we are going to dismiss either classroom or grade level at a time, so there is less traffic, less congestion in the hallways. Again, we still need to maintain our social distancing. We still have to maintain wearing our masks. We still have to maintain a single file and exiting on one side or directional hallways. Then it goes into student pickup. At the at the end of the day, typically, we would be in the cafeteria. Again, we still have those areas in the cafeteria where we can keep our six-foot area. We will make sure we have students sitting in those areas, social distancing. We'll have a monitor outside with a radio, walkie-talkie, calling in and dismissing one student at a time. Again, this process is gonna take a little bit longer than it has in the past. We ask you to be patient with us while we work out some of the kinks. But I think that is the best way to maintain social distance, maintain everyone's safety, health and safety at moving forward. Our nurses station, we are separating our nurses this year. We used to have both nurses in one area, in one in one room. This year, we are having an upstairs nurses station and a downstairs one, again, to limit the traffic and the flow in there. I think from September to March, we had over seven thousand visits to the nurse's office last year. So again, we want to definitely limit as much as traffic as there is possible. We have an isolation room in both nurses' office, so if someone does have symptoms of COVID or symptoms, high fever, coughing, et cetera, we can separate them and isolate them until we can call families to come pick them up. That's pretty much that, it in a nutshell. Again, the student expectations are that we need to have students arrive for the virtual meet on time. If you are scheduled for a nine o'clock meet, make sure that you are there by nine o'clock. They're expected to attend all online meetings. We're gonna try to keep it very consistent. If you have a meeting every day at nine, that would be that every day. So the consistency is gonna be invital for the families and vital for our teachers and our staff to make sure that we can deliver the the most meaningful instruction as possible. I think that's pretty much it for my presentation. Dr. Cook, is there anything else that you would like me to expand on? One last thing, if you could, please make sure that your email address, your phone numbers, your contact information is up to date through our registrar. We send out multiple either emails, multiple mailings, and we do get a number of them back saying that the email or the addresses are incorrect. In order for us to, you know, communicate successfully, we need to have those correct information. Just give us a call or send us an email with your correct information. We did purchase the Remind app last year for the entire district. We use that at the elementary school exclusively. If a teacher sends you a Remind app notification, make sure that you log in and do that. Google Classroom, Google Meet is gonna be our primary sources of delivery of instruction during this time. So make sure that we are, we can get into the Google Classroom, Google Meet. That is all for me. Is there any questions I can possibly answer? I don't think Dr. Cook said you weren't gonna do it during this presentation. But if you do have any questions, please email me. My email address is up there on the on the screen as right now, or email Mr. Schlenker, or always can always call the office.
Yeah, we're gonna take at the end via chat. People can also send their questions to Mr. Miski, as well as give Mr. Miski a call at five one eight nine four three four six nine six to ask you a question. And I'll read some of the questions and answers at the end of the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Rivers.
Thank you.
Next up is our middle school. This over boss here, I'm asking her to mute.
Good morning, everyone. While he's pulling it up, John Rivers did such an exceptional job. Mine will probably be a lot shorter and sweeter. We'll concentrate more on what's going on on the secondary campus. Before I start, I think it's really important that everyone understands that the middle school and high school, since we share a campus, have worked very closely together. So you'll see a lot of similarities in our procedures. Obviously, different group of students, so there will be some things that are different. But overall, we wanna make sure that the parents have consistency if they have a sixth grader or a junior. So I'd like to start, Dr. Cook, if you don't mind jumping right to page four, because the first couple pages, we're just talking about the difference between the remote learning and the hybrid. And I think that Dr. Cook and John have done a really nice job explaining it. So I wanna talk about what does full remote learning look like in the middle school? This is really important, because the feedback that we received last year in our first time trying to do a full remote learning was about the communication piece and the parents maybe not understanding what was happening and the students and log on. So we wanna make sure we're really clear today and moving forward on what the expectations are. So the most important thing is one of the, that all students will have access to technology. So we need to know as soon as possible if you need a Chromebook, and I believe, Dr. Cook, that is in the survey about who needs that type of information, what support you need. We're gonna spend the first couple of, well, couple of days, when we come back on the fourteenth online, online, the teachers will be making sure that the students and parents know what are the available technologies and how to use it. Different from last year, this year, students will get their schedules in the mail like they always do. But what they will be doing is they'll be following their schedule. So if they have period one math at seven thirty-five, the expectation is they will be on period one math at seven thirty-five. They'll be following their schedule that is sent home. They will be following their schedule, attending class using the Google Meet. That was something that they started last year. Over the summer, many of our teachers have actually gone to quite a few in services on the different aspects of Google Meet so that we can actually enhance what we've been up to. Over the summer, many of our teachers have actually gone to quite a few in services on the different aspects of Google Meet so that we can actually enhance what we've been up to. Attendance is mandatory and the attendance policy will be followed. I'll talk a little bit more about the attendance policy towards the end, but that's really important. If your child, for example, was late in the middle school last year and they were supposed to be in class at 7:35 and they weren't, you receive that phone call. You receive that notice. Your child might have had a consequence for being late or for the attendance. They might have gotten letters home. We are following that attendance policy. So it is as if they are still in school. We will have online office hours by grade level teams. As you know, any of you who have been in the middle school before, we work together in teams. We have team leaders. So we will be reaching out to parents. But at the same time, we're encouraging the parents that be the first point of contact is going to be your grade level team leader because they know exactly what's going on. However, always CC us, always let us know what's going on. Mr. Shaw and I are here to provide whatever assistance as always is needed. So when we talk about the hybrid plan, we're going to be two days on and two days off, three days off, excuse me. There will be packets and internet opportunities. Students, we talked about that, Google Meet times will check in. And one of the things that we pride ourselves in the middle school is our peak of the weeks. Our peak of the weeks go out every week with class expectations and assignments that parents can follow along so they know exactly what's happening. So that will continue with our peak of the weeks being sent out, emailed out, and will be attached to your students' Google classrooms. So on our next page, I want to phase into a little bit about our hybrid learning. I do want to really emphasize what we are really excited about going into this phasing slowly because we all need to remember that for us here at the middle school, as in all the district, this is new for our teachers too. So the beginning of the first day of professional development, we're really going to be delving into the various forms of technology, the expectations regarding communication and attendance, and then we'll be working our way up. So when we do have the hybrid and the students are coming in, we are making sure that we are practicing CDC guidelines. We're being safe. Where the students, we as educators need to understand exactly what it looks like with the masks, with the temperature. So we hope that we know when we come back for the hybrid learning model, we'll be ready to go. As Mr. Rivers said, we'll have our Group A and Group B. One of the things we've discussed at the middle school, high school is, well, how do we break that out? What does that look like? Do we go alphabetically? Do we go by address? So those are still things that we are working out, but our goal is to make sure that it is what works best for families. So I'll give you an example of a Group A, similar to what Mr. Rivers said. Group A will be in school, regular schedule on Monday and Tuesday. And Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, they will do remote learning. Opposite, that is Group B. They will have remote learning Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, Friday will be the in-school. Just to point out something with that, how we split them up, there are approximately 350 students here. And one of the things when I'm talking with some of the parents who have already called with concerns is when we cut that in half and we're looking at 175, we do have the ability here to social distance. We do have the ability when we break that in half, instead of having 24 kids in a room, having 12. We've done it. We've put the plastic bags, as you've seen in the video, and we can do that and we can keep your students safe. So I can't stress that enough. Dr. Cook, if you could go on to the next slide, please. This is going to be the most important thing. In the elementary school, there's more parent involvement. And as we get to middle school, we have more of the students taking ownership. So this is really important, whether we're virtual or hybrid. We really need to stress to the students, they are expected to attend all online meets. It's not optional. If for some reason your child has a doctor's appointment or an orthodontist appointment, you would do as you normally would. You'd notify the office that they're going to be out and you would follow up with a note. That way, we can keep track of our attendance. Students will arrive to their classes on time. That means if the class starts at 7:35, they need to be online, ready to go at 7:35. Students will follow their schedules, as I said. They will be prepared with their necessary materials and supplies. This is another piece that is really important for parents to know. If you need anything, we need to know so we can make sure you have that. If you're in a math class and you don't have a calculator, we'll provide that calculator. If you need art supplies, I spoke with Ms. Glazarian yesterday. She's making baggies to make sure all of the materials and supplies you need for your child to be successful, virtual and hybrid. We are going to make sure that you have them. We just need to make, you just need to make sure that you let us know. And again, students will follow the directives and protocols. And students are expected to hand in assignments and take assessments when assigned. Social distancing, as both Mr. Rivers and Dr. Cook has shared, we're going to follow the guidelines from the CDC. We are all set up with that. I know if you've seen some in the video, we will, like I said, be following the CDC protocols. Entry and exit protocols will be set up where we will have an entrance for the bus students to come in through the cafeteria and the drop-off students and the walkers will come in through the main entry doors where we'll have their temperature taken. If they need masks, we have masks to provide them. And by the dismissal, we have it all set up, they'll be dismissed by wings. Transition and lunch, very similar to what Mr. Rivers had shared. There was, we will not be utilizing the bell system. We will be moving the kids so they are not in the hallway at the same time. We already have where students walk to the right. We already have markers down, so we'll continue to do that. We already have the one-way stairway. We will continue to do that. Lunch and recess, we've already split in half, so the students are familiar with that and we'll continue to do that. As much as possible, we're going to let them outside. One of the things that we did talk about, we're having students stay in class when possible and having the teachers move. I did see some comments and people have shared they were worried about their students being, sitting still for a long period of time. Please know, we recognize our students. We know they're middle school students. We can't expect them, adults have a hard time sitting for hours on end, so we are not going to do that to your children. Our social workers, our guidance counselors and our psychologists have come up with some fantastic PBIS and No Place For Hate activities to make sure that students are engaged both in and out of the classrooms. Bathroom use is the same as Mr. Rivers had shared and the same with the nurses' office. And just to reiterate, the most important thing is attendance expectations, is making sure your student is up where they need to be, online when they need to be, and then again, communicating with us if there is more information that is needed. One of the things we talked about at the middle school is that we would like to see middle school town hall meetings with parents. Obviously, as we have just seen, there are some kinks and things we may have to work out with that. So it would be invite-only for your grade level teams, I'm thinking. We have the Remind app, the Peak of the Week, School Tool Grades, Participation and Attendance, and Google Classroom. Parents, if you have not yet signed up for School Tool, particularly those parents coming in from sixth to seventh grade, I'm sorry, fifth to sixth grade, you will be getting that information home. And again, your team leaders will be reaching out to all of you at different grade levels and providing any additional information you might need. So Dr. Cook, that sums it up for us.
All right, Ms. Lusen, unfortunately, I'm not going to put up your presentation, but you can just give an overview of what the high school is going to do. We're going to put the presentations online and on Facebook and Twitter for people as well.
Okay, so ours is going to be even shorter than the middle school and the elementary school because everyone has done a great job and we have worked together to develop these plans. When it comes to both the virtual and hybrid model, students at the high school will be following their daily schedule. So those are the times that they will sign on during their virtual learning meets. And during virtual learning, you're expected to attend all Google meetings and classes. The teachers will be developing office hours for both the virtual and hybrid models that we will share out. And student attendance will be accounted for. Students are attended to, are expected to attend their classes five days a week during virtual learning. So that is something that they should have that expectation to do, just like they would during the regular school year. When it comes to virtual learning, 100% virtual, it does not matter if you're on the A or B schedule. You will be signing on or logging on during your teacher-directed time for that class. Participation in these classes are really important. And a parent will receive notification if a child does not attend class. And if there is, for some reason, an excused absence, just like with before and what Ms. Overbaugh said, you are going to notify the office and follow that up with a note through email. Please come to your virtual meetings, prepare to do work, to have the tools necessary that you will need in that class. And that will be given to you by your teacher, probably on Google Classroom or on Google Classroom. And you're also going to, speaking of that, you're going to follow the directives and protocols of your teacher for that class. So make sure that during your first week of school, if you have any questions, you ask them of that particular teacher. At the high school level, you will have your six to eight different teachers. And so just ask them what the protocols are for their class. Make sure you're handing in your assignments on time. This is, and you are handing them in, even if virtual or hybrid, you're going to follow the deadlines that the teacher has set. When it comes to the hybrid model, again, teachers will be, or your classes will be your nine-period class day that's in School Tool. Or if you are at CTE or any of the other programs that we have at the high school level, you will be following that. So make sure that you know that and that it will be regardless of your virtual or hybrid model. When it comes to the hybrid model, you will be in class Monday and Tuesday. And if you're in the A or B group or orange and blue, whatever we decide, that you will be here for two days of the week. And then the other three, you will either have synchronous or asynchronous learning provided by your teacher. Again, those protocols will be provided by your teacher when it comes to the hybrid model. Students in the hybrid model are expected to attend all online meets. So if your teacher says you need to log on during this time, please make sure that you do it. Sorry, guys, I just have to look on my, the paper version, so because it can't be projected. All students who, and Dr. Cook alluded to this earlier, any student who's a special education student, ENL student or special circumstances, they may be here four days out of the week. When it comes to the hybrid model, just like Mr. Rivers mentioned, we are going to have one-way hallways. We are going to have six feet apart stickers and students are going to be in the bathroom one at a time. Those are all things that we will have. We will also not have lockers, so that's something to keep in mind as you're prepping for this year. And students are expected to wear masks when they are in the hallways and our classrooms unless otherwise directed by a teacher or staff member. When it comes to dismissing from those classes, it will be staggered. And the teachers will, or the staff will sanitize the desk. In the hybrid model, students will have lunch and, just like their regular three periods of lunch, we've had regular three period of lunch. Students are expected to sit two at a table. And in the video, this was shown, two at a table, they'll be called up, one to get their lunch. And then at the conclusion of the lunch period, it will be sanitized. The tables and chairs and stuff will be sanitized by our staff members. When you enter and exit the building, it will be, if you are staff, you will be coming from the gym. If you are a walker or if you are being dropped off by a parent, you will come through the main entrance. And if you are at, being dropped off by the bus, you will be coming through the auditorium. We've mentioned pretty much everything else. We have been trying to be consistent in the district. So that is all I have, Dr. Cook, unless you would like me to ask something else or say something else.
Ms. Lusen, thank you so much. And Mr. Brad couldn't make it, you did a job, well, job well done, filling in for Mr. Brad. Your job, it's all about what principles and system principles are on, taking their Saturdays to be with us. So at this particular point, we're going to entertain questions that were submitted in advance to Ms. Kaminski. So again, if you don't hear answers to your question, we're going to list these online. Today's presentation, with the exception of some technical difficulties, will be listed as well, as well as the presentation. So I just want people to know that. Additionally, you will receive school-specific, back-to-school-specific information regarding your child's schedule, regarding supplies, etc., that need to be purchased. That information should be going out pretty soon. Again, we need those surveys back to make sure that you get the particular information that you need. So back-to-school information is forthcoming, so please continue to be patient with us. So some of the questions we were able to gather. What are the stats if a teacher does not respond to an email? Again, our teachers are going to be here on campus. Our teachers are going to respond to email within a 24 to 40-hour period. My preference is 24 hours. If a teacher does not respond to you as a parent or does not respond to your student, the first level of accountability takes place at the building level, the administration. If you don't get a response from administration, please feel free to call my office and you will get a response, a timely response. So again, that's a requirement. Teachers are required to respond. And teachers, again, will be physically here on campus starting September 8th. Will the school be providing Chromebooks? Yes, the school will be providing Chromebooks. Chromebook distribution will take place at the back of the high school. We'll have a tent set up between September 8th through 11th from 9:00 until 3:00 p.m. So again, that information is going to be forward to you shortly and the parent information is going home. When we find out the students, teachers, again, information will be going home shortly. Again, will there be expectations for teachers in regards to communicating with students during remote instruction? Yes, there will be expectations. We're working on those procedures and protocols, but yes, teachers are required to respond to our parents and our students. Are teachers going to livestream a taped lecture to present and teach new material during a remote instruction? We're working that out with the teachers' union regarding that taped instruction. So that has to be worked out, particularly on our secondary level, whether your child is in school or at home or remote, depending upon what group you're in, Group A or B, or if you chose remote as we're starting out with the school year, there will be live instruction on our secondary level when we do switch to hybrid. So teachers will be responsible for making sure on the secondary level, six to 12, that children are learning remotely and in class, providing live instruction. In regards to the cleaning procedures, I did some online research in regards to the cleaning being used on our buses as well as the Genyon misters in the schools. I read as much as the ingredients in both of those products as I could with my limited knowledge, but I'm concerned with the overall amount of chemical use that the children will be exposed to on a daily basis. I appreciate hearing that the windows will be open on the bus with feasible due to the weather. However, can anything be said towards the ventilation in the schools to prevent constant inhalation of chemicals being used in the classroom? Also, since the mister does not require any wiping of desks after the mist sits for a dwell time, there's also a risk of contact exorcement by children where they're sitting at their desk and touching surfaces. Has there been discussion, many health officials in the chemical environment within the buildings, I understand the chemical use is quite catch 22 because we want to prevent the spread of germs. However, it does come with a cost over health of children. The chemicals that we use, whether it's on the bus or whether it's through, you know, in the school system, those chemicals are approved for us to use. We wouldn't use things that are not approved for us to use in schools. We do have a list of products that we have to comply with. So going back to the Genyon mist machine, when that mist is sprayed, the mist is quickly absorbed onto desks. Usually, it takes, it dries up within a minute or two upon application. So, you know, your child won't be coming into a wet or slippery desk, wet or slippery floor. It usually takes one or two minutes to dry up on contact, so there's not a need to worry about that. Yes, we have consulted with the health officials. Will the people using the thermometers be trained on proper use and cleaning of them? Yes. Yes. Again, training will be conducted from September 8th to 11th with our staff who's going to have the thermometers. Will there be any after school activities, sports during phase one and phase two? Right now, when it comes to athletic situations, the New York State High School Public Athletic Association is going to make a decision on September 21st regarding athletics. Initially, they were talking about moving some sports from fall to spring. The initial conversations had football and soccer being moved from fall to spring and baseball and softball being moved from spring to fall. I'm not sure where that decision, when the decision is with that, but I know the focus is to start on September 21st. Regarding after school activities here on district, in district, our after school activities are going to start off remotely. So September 14th, if your child is in a club and that club can be done remotely, that's the direction we're headed. When it comes to athletics, again, we're waiting for a decision from the governor and also the New York State High School Public Athletic Association. So that is not clear cut. Answered that question? I believe Mr. Rivers answered this question. My son will be entering the fifth grade. I'm guessing the answer will not be the same across grade levels, but I'm curious as to what the structural of the virtual learning will be like for the first month of 100% virtual and thereafter, regardless of what option we choose. For example, will there be Google meets a couple of times a week and then assignments to complete on their own? That's asynchronous instruction that should take place on Wednesday. How will that work when there are a hybrid model on phase two? So if your child is participating on a hybrid model, as we indicated, they will be in person two days a week and three days a week, they will be at home. So, you know, virtual instruction will take place again on the secondary level where their child is in school at home live. When it comes to elementary, we're working out the kinks. As a former elementary teacher, I can tell you, you know, doing virtual instruction live and having 12 to 13 children sitting in front of you, that is really difficult to do. So we're working out the kinks when it comes to hybrid instruction, particularly the virtual component of that for elementary aged children. So I just want you to know that we're working on those aspects of that. Can the mask policy be changed so there's a minimum quality of mask acceptable for wearing? No bandanas and no single layers. There are studies that show how much less effective they are by allowing students to wear them. You are undermining so many other safety steps you put in place. The mask that we wear, you know, quality of mask, I know there are different grades of them, the N95. Our nurses will be wearing N95 and they have to be fitted for those. But as far as masks, we do have appropriate masks here on site. So if the child is coming in with an appropriate mask, we have masks that we can give to your child while he or she's on campus. The high school lunch table was shown to have two students per table sitting. I believe I answered this in my presentation, but I'll read the question again. The high school lunch table was shown to have two students per table sitting facing each other. It really does not look, they would be sufficiently distanced, especially given what we know about erosion during normal speech. Or if a student yells or sneezes across without a mask, would it be possible to increase the distance between students facing each other while the masks are off to eat? So again, we're purchasing plexiglass. So if you looked at that high school lunchroom model, you saw the chairs one opposite one of another. There will be a plexiglass divider between those students, you know, while they're eating lunch. We'll also explore the idea of some high school students eating outside for lunch as well. We do have tables outside for high school students. If my son were in a classroom where another student or faculty member had tested positive, will we be required to self quarantine for 14 days before returning to a hybrid model? The answer is yes. The CDC is changing their regulations daily. But right now, prior to the most recent CDC notification, if there's a positive case in a particular classroom and we do contact tracing, those students who were in that classroom would have to quarantine and obviously get tested and be required to stay remotely for 14 days, including the staff member. In order to return to school for that particular location, obviously we have a doctor's note. So prior, in previous situations, the entire school would close down. But if we're able to target a specific location, particularly a classroom where someone was affected, that particular classroom would close, not the entire school. That's the CDC updated guideline. So again, that changes. I don't know if it's changed before I received my last, last information, but that's my understanding of it. If a student or faculty member tests positive for COVID-19, will they be required to have a negative test before returning to school? Yes. Also, I heard there were aides on the buses, which I cannot believe isn't actually a necessity, but I digress. Would each CES classroom have an aide as well? Teacher, assistant teacher, and what I like to refer to as a classroom lifeguard who is watching out for sneezes and close contact. Our primary classrooms, pre kindergarten and third, have multiple adults in and out of classrooms assisting. As you get up to fourth grade when it comes to teaching assistants, usually there are one or two teaching assistants on the fourth and fifth grade level who rotate between, between classes. At the secondary level, we do have teaching assistants, aides, who do rotate at the high school, the same thing. So if we go back in our hybrid model with less students in classroom, we'll be able to share the wealth of staff rotating in between classes to watch out for those types of things to assist with instruction. So there will be more hands on deck potentially with the hybrid model in comparison if we were 100% in person. Very good question. The new normal video did not mention how CES specials classes will work. But instance, will the kids be leaving their classrooms to go to the music room? Or will those teachers be coming to them? Mr. Rivers eloquently indicated what the model will look like for special area classes. There are situations where teachers will be rotating from room to room, but there are situations like phys ed, if it's a nice day outside, there's enough room on our secondary campus and our elementary campus to do social distancing and still have children participate with phys ed classes and also with recess. Would the district consider allowing families to lock in their learning choice at a later date, such as the first week of October? This will allow more time to see how things progress. Very good question. Again, surveys are going home. You should have your, you should have received yours either yesterday or today and possibly early next week. We need that information back by Friday, September 21st. If you have a change of heart before we start back on Monday, you know, October 13th, I'm asking you that you meet with your child's principal, assistant principal, you know, guidance counselor, and we can have a more detailed type of conversation. But right now, we do need to know what your initial selection or choice will be so that we can organize ourselves and have schedules and things in place to send out as early as possible. But that's a very good question. If there is a change of heart after your initial selection, again, we suggest that you meet or schedule an appointment with your child's administrator before we come back on, before students come back on Monday, October 13th to change that selection that you initially chose. Some comments, just to comment, I'm thankful for the month of remote learning to start off with. I appreciate the efforts of the district for safety first of our students, faculty and staff. Thank you so much. Safety is important before instruction takes place, whether it's keeping the bad guys out of our buildings or whether make sure we're in a healthy environment. I'm so appreciative of the new normal video that the team put out today. It really helps parents to make their own informed decisions about sending their children in. This is just a medical pet peeve. I believe this came from a health, one of our parents or health professionals. Again, we thank you as essential workers. I do not think temperatures should be considered a pass or fail. No one fails a temperature check. People are either a fever or a fever or they have a normal temperature when an elevated temperature. This seems nicer to use terms that apply more accurately and have less personal association. Again, we are not medical professionals here, but we do take your suggestion as well. Let's see what else came in. Miss, we're hot off the press. If students are going to be socially distanced, have temperature checked, why will they need to wear masks while sitting? Again, the mask situation, we have to adhere to that. I know the CDC is saying that if children are socially distant in the classroom, that they don't have to wear their mask. I'm recommending that they wear their mask and the teachers implement a mask break. Okay, that's what we're recommending here in the Catskill Central School District to keep everyone safe. But again, that classroom teacher has an expression that perform a half mask breaks. So again, we thank you for your questions. We will put answers to those questions on the website. We thank you again for joining us today. On this Saturday, our next town hall meeting will be Tuesday, which I believe is August 18th at 6 P M. We also have another one scheduled for Thursday, August 20th at 6 P M. We have individual campus level meetings with our staff. I believe Monday is going to be our secondary and Tuesday is going to be our elementary. So we're constantly meeting and communicating, not only with our parents in the community, but also with our teachers prior to the governor making his statement about stakeholder participation. So again, I thank you very much. We're going to put our presentations online. We're also going to list this recording online minus some technical difficulties that we had. So thank you once again. Please feel free to contact me, contact your building principal. If any further questions or concerns, please enjoy the rest of your day and stay safe. Thank you so much.